It is now seven o'clock. I will call the regular Town Council October 11th meeting to order, and we will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Ed, you lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now begin with a presentation from Matt Hart, the Executive Director of CROG, or C-R-O-C-G, however you want to call it, Capital Region. Kathy, do you have anything to add?
No, I just turn it right over to Matt.
Matt, welcome.
Very good, thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Chairman Thomas said, my name is Matt Hart, and I am the new Executive Director for the Capital Region Council Governments. I'm about eight months into this role, and I'm trying to get out to all of our towns and meet with the Town Council and talk a little bit about our activities as a region and in your community, and to solicit any input you might have, take any questions you might have. I have worked in the Capital Region as a good long time, for a good long time. I've been very good colleagues with Kathy over the years, and most recently, I was the Town Manager in West Hartford. So let me jump right in, and I'd like to thank Counselor Thomas for his service on our policy board, as well as Kathy's many years of service to the Capital Region. Also, I would like to commend and thank Russ Arnold for his service on our Transportation Committee. And if I can pronounce his name correctly, I believe it's Matt Hudfonger?
Yes.
For his service on our Regional Planning Commission. So some basics about CROG. We serve 38 municipalities, including the capital city, a population of about a million residents, and a geographic area of a little over 1,000 square miles. We have roughly 30 employees and a budget of about 8.4 million. But for a relatively small staff and relatively, you know, that size budget, we're able to do a lot of great work on behalf of our region. We serve as the MPO. MPO stands for Metropolitan Planning Organization. That's a federal designation. And in that role, we administer a lot of federal in-state transportation dollars, about 44 million last fiscal year. And we serve as the Regional Planning Agency, supporting the Regional Planning Commission, hearing applications coming from our member towns. We've provided a regional purchasing coalition for a good long time now. And under that coalition, we do the due diligence on behalf of our member towns. And our towns can purchase supplies, commodities, as well as services off of our list. We have a public safety, a small public safety and emergency management division that works very closely with state officials and public health departments across the region. They've been very, very active over the course of the pandemic. We produce an annual legislative agenda, looking at issues that are important to our region, important to our member towns. We're about to start on that work. And we present a draft to our policy board in January for their review and approval. And we serve as a content expert, particularly on planning matters, transportation planning matters, et cetera. So if you ever need us to come out and, you know, testify or talk about a particular subject, we are willing and able to do that. A little bit about some of the current initiatives we have underway. We are in the process of submitting four applications to the state's Regional Performance Incentive Program. The acronym is RPIP. Got to love acronyms in government. But what is that? Under that program, the state provides a three-year subsidy to help get a new regional program off the ground. And we're submitting four applications, one for economic development, one for animal control, one for building inspection, and one for assessment. So we can see if we can establish those services to bolster what we have in place for our member towns. We're also working, putting a lot of time and effort into the bipartisan infrastructure law, looking at this probably once-in-a-career opportunity. You know, we've got, I think, approximately $6 billion coming into the state of Connecticut. And we've added some additional staff to help administer that program. And I really want to thank Farmington, in particular Mr. Arnold, as well as Dylan Riley, for the excellent work they did helping to prepare the application under the Safe Streets for All program. So we just submitted our very first program, or actually, we submitted for a planning grant. And the town, you submitted for an implementation grant, supporting five communities across our region. So really, really want to thank you for taking that step to support the region. And that's going to be a five-year program. A five-year program where we're looking at the prospect of very helpful, beneficial infrastructure projects in roads, bridges, wastewater, in water infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, broadband, any number of things. So we're really excited about that. We also have a waste management study, or project underway. I think, as we all know, the MIRA facility in South Hartford is closing. It's no longer operating as a waste-to-energy plant. So all of our member towns, if they're not relying on another plant here in our state, in our region, need to transport their residential waste out of the community to points west. And it's become increasingly expensive, increasingly expensive. So we have a study underway right now to identify a set of short-term and longer-term solutions for the region. And we're going to be taking a very critical look at things such as a user fee, pay-as-you-throw, ways to get organic waste out of the waste stream. So we're hoping for a lot of good things to come for that project, come from that project. We're also working on to update our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs. That's a plan we update every five years. And it's very important to have in order to receive economic development grant monies from the federal government. This strategy, this SEDs, is a compilation of all of the major economic development strategies from across the region. And then lastly, we're working on various transportation studies, including two, I think, that are quite relevant to Farmington. One is the connectivity study. And I know we recently made a presentation, you all, regarding that. And then working to close the remaining gaps in the East Coast Greenway. Of particular relevance to you, I think, would be how we bring the Farmington Heritage Canal Trail over from Simms Berry into Bloomfield, into Hartford, into East Hartford, so we can connect the system we have in Western Connecticut with the system we have in Eastern Connecticut. And once we're able to do that, you know, it'll make for an even more robust system. We did recently receive, we've been awarded, a $16.4 million raise grant to actually construct some sections of the trail in Plainville and New Britain. And then lastly, I want to draw your attention to the benefit statement that I handed out to each one of you. And this is something we prepare for all of our towns on an annual basis. This is a five-year snapshot of what we see as the primary benefits associated with Farmington's membership in CROG. You can see on the upper right-hand side of the page, the dues you're paying for the current fiscal year, about $20,600. And then, if you look down in the middle section, you see how we've broken out a five-year benefit. We've calculated at a little under $5.3 million on dues of approximately $102,000 that you've paid over that five-year period. And you can see some projects that we've called out on that middle right-hand section of the page, such as the Brickyard Road Rehabilitation Project, South Road Reconstruction Project, et cetera. So this is a benefit statement that we hand out to all of our towns. And then if you flip the page over, some of the highlights from the previous fiscal year. Talk about the good work of our purchasing coalition. Saved our towns about $1.9 million. We've been supporting a crumbling foundations testing program for the eastern part of our region for many, many years now. We've got a Brownfields revolving loan program. Under the Public Health and Homeland Security Section, we've been administering program funds for 19 straight years now. Brought in last year, $1.2 million in grant funds to assist 14 of our local health departments. Looking at the right-hand side of the page, transportation funding, so-so critical to what we do in our role as the MPO. We directed over $44 million in spending. That's a combination of federal and state dollars. We administer the LOT-SIP program, the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program. And then the planning studies listed on the lower right-hand section of the page. And these planning studies are so important because they are the initial step in an eventual construction project. You need these planning studies in order to then proceed to the design and eventually to the construction phase. So I'll pause there. I really appreciate the time to meet with you tonight. Again, Kathy and other staff have been tremendous colleagues over the years and happy to take any questions you might have.
Great, thank you, Matt. Questions? Tom? No?
Thank you very much, first of all, for your presentation. That's really interesting to see all the projects that CROG is involved in. One thing I was curious about is, how do you prioritize all the different studies and projects that you have going on? Because it seems like there's so much going on across the state in different communities. How do you prioritize that work?
Good question. So we have a set of criteria for each and every program. The federal government, federal highway. If it's federal funding, much of that criteria is established by them. In terms of state grants, the same thing. The appropriate State Department or agency will formulate a set of criteria. And then we have our own criteria that we add as well. We tend to have projects in the queue. It's somewhat analogous to your capital improvement program. You have a multi-year capital improvement program. So we develop a schedule along those lines so that when one project is completed, we can begin another. And we're always looking to serve the entire region. Because our region is quite diverse. As we support the capital city, as well as the city of New Britain, the town of East Hartford, the town of West Hartford, town of Southington, you know, which have a fair amount of density. Most of our members are suburban communities, like the town of Farmington. And then we have a handful of rural communities, too. Like particularly out east, town of Ellington, Coventry, et cetera. So, you know, we've got a set of criteria we use. We put together a long-term schedule and work it along those lines.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Other questions? Matt, I'd just like to say thank you for coming in. You know, CROG has always been a tremendous asset to Farmington. We appreciate all the work that you all do. We're glad to have you aboard for this last eight months and look forward to working with you going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Matt, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to item D. Public hearing.
This is a legal notice of the Town of Farmington Public Hearing. We set a public hearing on October 11th, 2022, at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall, Council Chambers, on the purchase of property owned by Kathleen Binkowski and Patrick J. Murray, located at 1535 Farmington Avenue, .37 acres, and 1541 Farmington Avenue, 1.09 acres, for a total price of $780,000. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 26th day of September, 2022. Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
Good evening. Kathy Blonsky, Town Manager. Okay. The subject property consists of two parcels of land. Both parcels are within the R-12 residential zones. The parcels have a combined land acre of 1.6 acres and a total of two single-family homes located on the Farmington River. And here is a map showing parcel 1541 and 1535 in the red. Some general characteristics of the land. The acquisition type is residential. The property size is 1.46 acres. The zone is an R-12 residential zone. The resource values is riverfront open space and municipal use. The town's appraisal is $760,000 in total, and the homeowner's appraisal is $780,000 in total. Oops, sorry. 1535 Farmington Avenue consists of a roughly rectangular parcel of land having 114 feet of frontage along the southwesterly side of Farmington Avenue, aka Route 4. The site-zoned R-12 residential has a land area of 16,320 square feet, or .37 of an acre. The site slopes below the street grade to the Farmington River and has 109 feet of frontage along the north banks of the Farmington River. At the present time, the site is improved with a two-story-plus walkout basement, contemporary-style, single-family home, built in 2003, composed of 2,622 square feet of gross living area. 1541 Farmington Avenue consists of roughly rectangular parcel of land having 432 feet of frontage along the southwesterly side of Route 4. The site-zoned R-12 residential has a land area of 47,440 square feet, or 1.09 acres. The site slopes below the street grade to the Farmington River and has 345 feet of frontage along the northwest banks of the Farmington River. At the present time, the site is improved with a one-story-plus walkout basement, ranch-style, single-family home, built in 1930 and 1955, composed of 206 square feet of gross living area. Oops, I keep on doing that, sorry. Let's see if I can get it together. The purpose of the acquisition. Why should we purchase these properties? Town staff is recommending that the town purchase these properties for the future third bridge project. To complete this project, these parcels, or a portion of these parcels, need to be acquired. It is a benefit to acquire the parcels through this process now instead of the state taking the properties through the eminent domain process, which could significantly delay the project. It is also a benefit to acquire these properties now so that they can be used as a staging area throughout construction. Lastly, these properties are riverfront. Therefore, the remaining portions could be used for passive recreation after construction is complete. Town staff has been working with the homeowners, and they are in agreement that this is the preferred method of acquiring these properties. Recommendation. I am recommending that the Town Council purchase these properties for a total price of $780,000. The acquisition process. The procedure for open-space acquisition approval for this property includes the following steps. We set the public hearing for October 11th, council meeting, at the September 13th meeting. And that we did last month, and that's complete. We're holding the hearing right now. Tonight on the agenda, we have an action item to make an 8-24 referral to the TPZ. The TPZ will receive the 8-24 report at the November 15th, 2022, meeting. And then we'll vote on the acquisition to authorize us to purchase the property at our November 15th, 2022, meeting. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'll ask for any questions or comments on this item only from members of the public. If you have any comments, please come up to the podium, state your name, address, and make your comments. Do we have any comments on these properties? Tim?
Tim Kelly, 62, Westview Terrace. Thank you for the time. So I guess we're looking for some reaction to the concept of putting a new bridge across the Bismarck-Montith intersection over to New Britain Avenue. From the size of the audience, it's obvious this hearing wasn't well advertised. Let me start with a point of clarification. This proposed bridge would actually be, as I understand it, our fourth bridge across the Farmington River. And I can be corrected anytime here, but we've got one bridge over the Farmington River down at Modern Tire, Route 4, going to Starbucks. We've got the beloved Unionville Bridge, which is getting a minor facelift. And then we have the Route 4 Bridge over the river at Huckleberry Hill, going to River Road, which leads up to Bridgehampton Neighborhoods, Strawfields, et cetera, et cetera. So I think this would actually be our fourth bridge. But whatever.
Technically correct.
All right. Well, good to know we're on the same page. Okay. Here's where we may diverge a little bit. My concern at this point is that if we spend the first million dollars on acquiring property and related studies, then we're really committed as a town to this project and at this site. The primary stated intent or justification for this project, as I understood it from a previous presentation, is first and foremost to move cars from Brickyard Road across the river and then on to wherever they're going, which presumably would take them up Meadow Road or maybe veering off to New Britain Avenue across town or out of town. The last bridge proposal that we had was about 25 years ago. At that time, it was found that the most best way to do this was to build a bridge at the Brickyard Road intersection and go from there across the Farmington River, land somewhere adjacent to Tunxus, which again is a place a lot of people try and get across the river to. And then you can go up Meadow or over to New Britain, what have you. Obviously, this would be a more direct, and I think convenient, way of moving Brickyard Road traffic than what the current concept is, I think, that's on the table here. Because at this point, if you're coming down Brickyard and you need to get to the other side of the river, what we would be saying is you're going to have to turn right and go probably the wrong way on Route 4 from the driver's perspective. You have to go about a mile. Then you have to stack up for a lefty and turn at the Bismarck-Montith intersection, go across the new bridge, then stack up for another left turn, and, you know, go back a mile down New Britain Avenue to kind of get where you were trying to get to. Which seems convoluted and somewhat unproductive. Now, maybe there's an analysis that says a bridge built on Montith is quicker and cheaper than one built on Brickyard. I've not seen that, so I don't know. But if I go to the doctor to fix my knee, I don't want him to operate on my ankle just because it's sort of quicker and cheaper, right? Because we build bridges here about once every 100 years, best I can figure. So perhaps it would be beneficial or helpful to see this analysis before we commit to spend the next million dollars. In other words, a bridge at Brickyard versus Montith. And I know there's excitement at Town Hall because there's an unusual amount of dollars dropping down from the feds for the state towns to utilize. So I understand that people want to move quickly. But I think it might be worth seeing that analysis before we make the next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. I didn't know this was an agenda item when I came to support my son tonight, but giving what he just spoke...
Could you give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim Mangum, 15 Carrington Lane. So I have a question about the other side of the river. So out of the two proposals that he just spoke of, we know what needs to be acquired and, you know, worked on on this side of the river. What's on the other side? Do we know anything? Is it, are there more houses to acquire on the other side? To carpet path? Are there ease of access to the roads that he mentioned?
Maybe, Russ, you can just answer that quickly. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yep.
We answered the question.
Yep.
Could you call up the GIS for me, please? The GIS? Oh, it's right here. I can do it here? All right, I'm capable.
Yes, please.
Can't see that far. You're all getting a lesson in my prowess in internet surfing.
And we can get it all, so that's good.
So, is that good? You can see that?
Yes.
All right. So, my name's Russ Arnold. I'm the Director of Public Works and Town Engineer here at the Town of Farmington. The parcels that we're talking about are right here. Here's the Town Hall, Staples and the Library. We would be crossing over the river to the industrial property right here. It is about 11 acres, owned by Jones, Mark Jones. There's a storage area there, like construction equipment, things like that. And it is almost directly across from Oak Ridge. So that parcel is in process as well to be acquired.
So no other homes is the other part of that answer?
No other homes, no.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
You're good? No problem?
Russ, before you go, just to clarify, because Tim was talking about the purpose of the bridge being to solve Brickyard Road traffic. I think the CROG presentation we received focused on a little more than just Brickyard. Do you want to address that at all? I think it's more of a regional concept.
Absolutely. It's a regional project. It'll pull traffic out of the centers, out of Farmington Center, Unionville Center. I'm not sure what the level of detail is or what we would need to get into to see who's coming from Brickyard Road that would want to get across the river to Tunxus Mead at this point. But it sure could be studied. The bridge, that program back in 1998 was part of that whole Route 4 corridor study. Since that project got voted down, it really wasn't an avenue that, as the councils, years ago, I think it was six or eight years ago when we were discussing this, decided to pursue that again. It made more sense to cross the river at its narrowest point environmentally. Yes, cost does come into a factor when you were talking about the length of the structure. One thing that would be good to note as well, but in order, excuse me, but in order to do any improvements to Route 4, to add turning lanes for the high school project, property's going to have to be acquired anyway. There's a steep slope on 1541 that we would need to acquire quite a bit of frontage in order to accommodate the turning lanes that are necessary for the project. Taking the two properties now will greatly reduce the duration of the project design life itself. When you have to wait for a right-of-way phase, in my experience, it could take two-plus years. And given that, from the council before, it was decided this is where we would put the new bridge. The impact environmentally, as I said, in my opinion, is far greater at the Brickyard Road intersection. in my opinion, is far greater at the Brickyard Road intersection. You're talking about a structure and ramps. You're probably talking close to 1,000 feet to span the river at its widest point, get up and over, stay up over the wetlands. You're going to be acquiring property there as well on the east side... Or, I'm sorry, on the north side. I stand corrected. As the connectivity study shows, you know, it's a... This is a regional project. It's a regional improvement to free up not only the Route 4 corridor, but the 177 corridor. The Route 10 corridor will be improved. I don't know what else I can say.
No, that answers my question.
But we're hitting 26 different intersections at this point.
Yep. No, that answers my question. Thank you.
Quick question. It's my understanding that...
Johnny. We are going to have a moment for the council to speak later. This is just for the public. When we have the action item, then the council will have the questions. Are there any other questions from the public? Yes, ma'am. Yes, you can come up, state your name and address. Yes. We're very formal here. Witness the bow tie. I've got to be formal today.
Hi, Marita Garrick, 11 Winwood Road. Hey, everybody. I just had a quick question. I just recently heard about this project. I only got the alert about this meeting last night. And I just wondered, is this a done deal or is this something we're going to vote on? It sounds like it's already happening. Has it been confirmed and it's going to happen for sure?
This portion of it, these houses, we're voting on this tonight on the council.
Well, we're voting for an 8-24.
Right. We're voting on referring this to the town planning and zoning. It still has a few steps to go through the process.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Are there any questions online?
I do have a hand raised.
Thank you.
This would be Leslie. If you could please unmute yourself.
Hi, Leslie To, 609 Plainville Avenue. I'm just curious with this bridge, where are they going to? Through the neighborhoods near West District?
Russ?
Just so I'm clear, you're asking where is the bridge going to?
Where is all the traffic going to go to? Through Coppermine, Oak Ridge?
The majority of the traffic is predicted, we're assuming is going to go on to New Britain Avenue. There will be traffic that will go up to Oak Ridge. It'll be from traffic, people leaving the high school to get back to their neighborhood. It's going to be no different than traffic going around through Unionville Center or through Farmington Center. They're going to make their way wherever they need to get to.
So you think all those side roads like Coppermine can handle that kind of traffic?
They can... They're handling that traffic now. If traffic chooses to go through Farmington Center to New Britain Avenue to Coppermine or Red Oak, they're there now. Same with going through Unionville and around New Britain Avenue and up Oak Ridge or through Coppermine and Meadow Road, et cetera.
Doesn't even make sense. Like, somebody from Bristol coming from Farmington is going to cross that bridge and head through all those neighborhoods?
They could, certainly, yes.
I could refer you to the CROG traffic study, which looked at the different traffic patterns and where they expect the traffic to be coming from and going to. And was that at our... Which meeting? What date was that meeting?
September...
The last meeting.
Our last meeting. If you go online, it'll have the whole presentation, and it will show the map with the traffic patterns. And that might help the answer. And if you have further ones, please feel free to reach out to us again then.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other online comments?
I do not see any other hands raised.
You're free to go, Russ. Okay. With that, I believe we'll be closing our public hearing. Item E, new items, seeing none. We will move to item F, public comment. This will be an opportunity for the public to speak on any topic whatsoever they wish to address the town and the council on. For those of you here in person, please approach the podium, state your name and address. And anyone online, just raise your hand. After those in person, we will go online. Is there anyone in person who wishes to address the council? Seeing none. Kat, do we have anyone online?
I don't see any hands.
We have no hands up online. Last chance. Okay. No further public comment. We will go on to item G1, Joseph.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the September 13th, 2022 regular town council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the reading of the minutes for September 27th, 2022 regular town council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments? Brian?
Actually, just one comment. I noticed that at the last meeting, I suggested that we might at some point look at the cost for housing the projects and programs we are projecting for the high school and existing space in town, just as an option. If it didn't go through, it's just something to compare. And I didn't see that in the notes, just to add that.
Okay. Could we add that to, I think, when Brian made his comment, that point in the meeting? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? There's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Just note that I'm going to stay in. I wasn't at the meeting, so thank you.
Who noted? Item H, do we have any written communications or appeals? Seeing none. Moving on to report of committees. Item I1, 1928 Building Committee.
Yes, we had a meeting today. We are in the process of formalizing spaces for the Town Hall to work efficiently. And the committee plans, I'm doing a presentation, I believe, in a month from today.
Great. Item 2, Farmington High School Building Committee.
So the critical bids or the critical bid packages came in on Wednesday. We will continue to receive the rest of the bids this week. We have not gone through them at this point. Our meeting is tomorrow at 5:00 in the FHS Library. Will will start to oversee those.
Great. Thank you. Item 3, Green Efforts.
Green Efforts is working on an EV charger near the Staples House. And we also continue to work on our anti-idling campaign at the schools at drop-off time and pickup. And we've started a new discussion on native lawns and pollinating pathways, which may require a change to the town ordinance. Our next meeting is November 1st at 7:00 p.m.
Great. Thank you. Land Acquisition Committee.
Nothing to report.
Race Equality Task Force.
Yes. On October 6th, the Race Equality Task Force held a well-attended community conversation at the Furniture Street Christ in Farmington. The Speaker, Debbie Irving, gave a talk entitled, "I'm a Good Person, Isn't That Good Enough?" The event was also streamed live over Zoom. Earlier that day, Debbie gave an abbreviated presentation to Town Hall employees, roughly 50 Town Hall employee members registered for the event. This was the first of three community conversations with the same speaker. The next conversation will be held in November. More details will be released as soon as we get them. And our next task force meeting is November 28th at 6:30 p.m.
Great. Thank you. We'll now move on to item J, Report to the Council Chair and Liaison's Chair Report. First note I will have, it is now October 11th. We are almost in the middle of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I would encourage any of you out there to honor those who are currently fighting or have fought previously cancer, to give to any of the numerous breast cancer research and support groups. And also keep an eye out. I know there are a number of the sports teams that are having their pink-out games coming up. So try and attend and wear your pink and support them in any way you can. Also, November 8th is Election Day. Please remember to do your civic duty and get out there and vote or fill in your absentee ballots. Just as a note, generally in Farmington, we like to keep our politics civil. So let's try and avoid the vitriol we see on the national level and keep our discussions to the issues. Also, I would like to thank the Town Manager's Office and staff for applying for that $500,000 steep grant that is going towards our splash pad, our four pickleball courts, and updated parking by Westwoods Golf Course. That's going to be a tremendous addition to the town. Very important for everyone out there. Bulk Waste Collection is next week on your regular trash day, the 17th to the 21st. So get your stuff out of the curb. And if you're looking for stuff, just wander by your neighbors and take their stuff. And finally, if there's anything else you're looking for in town, any activities, as always, look to explore Farmington for all those current events. With that, I will hand it over to... We're going to skip down to Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee, which is having their meeting right now that I'm missing, so I'll have to update you next time. Economic Development Commission Liaison.
Yes. Thank you, CJ. Just to remind everybody that the next Business Breakfast will be held on this Thursday, October 13th, from 7:45 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. And we're going to have Liz Shapiro from the Office of Arts, who's going to present on the economic impact of the creative economy. And Andre Lepel-Kiet will perform a snippet of the Farmington Historical Society's new tour, "The Odyssey of the Amistad: A Trail to Freedom." So join us and find out what the arts mean to business. And the next Economic Development Meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, October 12th, at 5:30 p.m.
Great. Thank you. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Thank you, CJ. There were a couple of approvals to help keep our historic district beautiful. There will be some siding going up on a number of the buildings at Brickwalk Shops, which you will see happening. Also, we have approval to replace a door with windows in one of the homes on Main Street. Also, they will be replacing gutters at another home in the West District Road. All these files... These plans are on file in the Town Office. Oh, and there was also a certificate of approval to install a sign at 768 Farmington Avenue. And I'd like to thank everyone in the historic district for coming to the district and letting us know their plans for adjustments so that we can keep the historic district beautiful. And our next meeting is going to be a week from today, on Tuesday at 5:00 here in Chambers.
Thank you. Housing Authority.
Nothing to report, other than our next meeting is November 16th at 6:30.
Great. Thank you. Library Board.
The libraries are planning to migrate to Library Connection, Inc., which is a consortium of 31 public and academic libraries in the greater Hartford region. They will go live on the new network on November 16th. This migration is a significant change. It will mean local residents will now have access to more than 1.2 million items at member libraries in the consortium. The library staff will be helping to train patrons on using the new system after they migrate on the 16th. In preparation for this migration, they are also going fine-free starting today. So as of today, October 11th, they have eliminated overdue fines at each of our libraries, which I guess is a growing trend in libraries in Connecticut and across the country.
Okay. Thank you. Town Plan and Zoning Liaison.
TBZ meets tomorrow. The biggest thing on the agenda is, I believe, there'll be a vote on the project at 168 Coppermine Road, which is a cluster of new homes. And it's been discussed for... This will be the third meeting now, so it's a big item.
Unionville Historic District Commission.
Yes. The Unionville Historic District Commission met on October 6th. The commission is continuing to prepare for another historic district walking tour. Right now, the commission is tentatively targeting April or May of 2023 for this event. The commission is also planning on sending out a letter to households in the historic district to see if anyone has interest in serving on the commission. And they will let the Town Council know, of course, if anyone expresses interest, so that those names can be vetted through the process we have established for appointments. And the next meeting is scheduled for November 3rd at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. That was... Was that Historic District or Improvement?
That was the Historic District.
Okay.
Yes.
Unionville Village Improvement Association.
Yes. Thank you, CJ. Unionville Village Improvement Association, I just wanted to mention that the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new addition at the Unionville Museum was held on September 25th. It was nice to see the completion of this long-awaited addition to the museum. And also want to mention that on Friday, October 14th, at 11:00 a.m., the Unionville Museum will host an exhibit on the New Horizons Community.
Great. Thank you. Water Pollution Control Authority.
Only thing to report, we have a meeting tomorrow night at 7:00.
Great. Any other liaisons anyone would like to report on? Seeing none. We'll move to item K, the report of the Town Manager.
You have the report in front of you and just a couple of items that we're going to have another coffee with the Town Council, and that's going to take place in November in Unionville. So we'll send out a notice for that, and people can sign up for that. Also, that the Farmington Historic District has given a study... The Study Committee of the Farmington Historic District and Property Commission has submitted an attached preliminary study report, so that's in your packet. And it's anticipated that the Town Council will receive the final report in late January 2022. And a public hearing will be scheduled for early 2023. And you also have the quarterly reports. So that's my report. And if you have any questions on anything, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you. Questions for the Town Manager?
Just one. Has there been any more feedback on the Parsons property?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And a motion to approve Town Manager's report.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Town Manager's report.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Okay. Heard of no appointments? Anybody have any surprise appointments? Okay. No appointments today. Moving on to item M, old business, seeing none. We'll move on to item N1, new business.
Yes.